Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Flugerville City Council, March 11th at 7:00 P. M. Please join me in the pledge, U.S. and Texas, in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
May be seated. Our next item is public comment in accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by City Council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the City Council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. This evening, I have one individual, Eli Alborn.
Good evening, Mayor, and esteemed council members. My name is Eli, and I'm here representing the Rotary Club of Flugerville and the Wild West Brew Fest, a nationally recognized beer festival that happens to call Flugerville home. First, I want to start off by expressing my sincere gratitude for your support last year in 2024. Your generosity is helping to offset that Austin Public Health fees and assisting with the Fetcher Ride made a huge impact. It allowed us to contribute and ensure that the event remains safe, well-organized, and accessible to all of our attendees. Fetcher Ride provided a responsible transportation option, reinforcing our commitment to safety. Thanks to your help, we hosted a successful festival that benefited both attendees and the community. Second, as we look ahead and coming up in April 11th and 12th, we respectfully ask that the city continue to support us by covering these same costs. The APH fees are a money grab, charging $280 per booth. Even for food trucks that are permitted in Travis County, still have to pay an additional $280 to be at this event. This isn't just hurting our event, it's impacting other important Flugerville events like Pride, Juneteenth, and Slice. These fees take away from profits that we are working to pour back in the community through charitable donations. Additionally, Fetcher Ride remains essential for maintaining a safe and responsible experience, and your continued assistance will allow us to keep this service available. Third, this year, thanks to Ms. Holliday's recommendations several years ago, is that we've made changes to ensure that the Brew Fest is more accessible to the entire community. We lowered all of our ticket prices across the board and made the event more affordable to all. We also introduced a new à la carte ticket to our launch party on Friday, which can get people in as low as $15 so they can experience the event without having to purchase a big, unnecessary package. These efforts are designed to welcome more Flugerville residents while continuing to attract visitors from outside the area. Wild West Brew Fest isn't just a local event, it's a regional attraction. In 2024, we welcome visitors from across Texas and from seven different states, from Texas and beyond, driving business to local hotels, restaurants, and shops. Every dollar spent by those out-of-town guests strengthens our Flugerville economy. Additionally, as a 100% volunteer-driven event, our proceeds go back to the community, supporting local charities, organizations. Again, reiterating, these APH fees only reduce our ability to give back. By continuing your support, we are not just helping Wild West Brew Fest, you're investing in Flugerville's economic growth, safety, and community spirit. So again, thank you. We anticipate this next year, and I look forward to your continued support. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We can't have any discussions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Is there anybody else wishing to make public comment? Trista, would you read the consent agenda? Tristan. Pulling 4H and 4J. All right.
All right. Items 4H and 4J have been pulled from the consent agenda. 4A is approving an ordinance on first reading with the caption reading "Ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, amending the City of Flugerville, Texas Code of Ordinances, Chapter 72, regarding speed limits on FM 685 and the city limits of the City of Flugerville, defining speeding and fixing a penalty therefore declaring what may be a sufficient complaint in prosecutions hereunder with a saving clause repealing conflicting laws and declaring an emergency. 4B, approving an annexation ordinance on second reading with the caption reading "Ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, annexing for full purposes tract of land tolling 82.962 acres of land being 80.218 acres out of the GB's Implement and JV Bergen Survey Number 285, abstract number 2370 and Thomas Hancock Survey Number 20, abstract number 392, being a portion of Steger Lane and 2.681 acres out of the Andrew Austin Survey Number 19, abstract 38, out of the GB's Implement and JV Bergen Survey Number 285, abstract number 2370, being a portion of Cameron Road, Travis County, Texas, within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction. The property is currently located at 17716 Steger Lane to be known as the 17716 Steger Lane Annexation, finding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving a service plan, providing severability, and providing an effective date. 4C, approving an ordinance on second reading with the caption reading "Ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-02-24 of the City of Flugerville, Texas, as amended by changing the zoning designation of approximately 5.05 acres of unplanted land situated in the Jacob Casner Survey Number 9, abstract number 2753, in Travis County, Texas, from agricultural development reserved to single-family mixed use to be known as the West Blade rezoning, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. 4D, approving an ordinance on second reading with the caption reading "Ordinance of the City of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-02-24 of the City of Flugerville, Texas, as amended by changing the zoning designation of the approximately 0.0826 acres being a portion of Block 4, Block 10, Town of Flugerville subdivision, in Travis County, Texas, from single-family suburban to neighborhood services to be known as the 308 North First Street rezoning, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for serviceability, and providing an effective date. 4E, approving an ordinance on second reading with the caption reading "Ordinance authorizing lease of city property located at 105 East Pacan, Flugerville, providing cumulative repealer and severability clauses, providing for open reading and establishing an effective date." Again, items 4H and 4J have been removed from the consent agenda. All remaining items will be acted upon in a single motion.
Move to approve. Second. And motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to our regular agenda, 5A, discuss and consider action to approve a purchase and sale agreement, PSA with Griffin Swinderton LLC for construction of the Monarch, the Multi-Generational Recreation Center within Downtown East, and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor, if you don't mind, would you pull up 5B as well?
Could you open up 5B as well?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Discuss and consider action to approve a purchase and sale agreement with Griffin Swinderton LLC for construction of the City Hall within Downtown East, and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, we're excited to bring you two purchase and sale agreements for the two city facilities going into Downtown East. This project, as you all know, broke ground on December 2nd of 2024 and is well underway with the infrastructure for the civil works that was approved in November by City Council. We've started this project with the acquisition of land, so there are a few reminders throughout this presentation about where we've been throughout the Downtown East projects as we start to finalize these final agreements to get this project out of the ground. And so we acquired the land, and then we've been building that project team, and as Council has seen many times, various agreements, the ground leases, licensing agreement, purchase and sale agreement for the infrastructure, been working, continued to work with our master developer, Griffin Swinderton, and Corinne Crawford, and our incredible design team to deliver what you see tonight through the purchase and sale agreements, with the assistance of Jeff Nydiger with Winstead, our council for this project. Council also sets very specific goals for Downtown East, and so as a reminder, because we haven't shared these in a little bit of time, these two items tonight meet several of these project goals. You'll see here from even number one, creating a vibrant, equitable, walkable neighborhood where people will live, work, shop, and play, as well as engage with city government. Certainly, that will be the case with both of these facilities. And you'll see both of these facilities meet several of these project goals, and very directly, specifically, goals 14 and 15, to deliver the Multi-Generational Recreation Center, and then ensuring delivery of a high-quality services by constructing a new City Hall. As a reminder, Phase 1 does include all the infrastructure for the project, including the extension of Main Street, which you see there from Railroad to 685. That's already been approved. Tonight is the purchase and sale agreements for the Rec Center and City Hall shown there in parcels 4 and 2, shown in blue on the map. To highlight some of where we are with the design project, we wanted to share also some of the imagery that our design teams have put together for us. On the left, you see there the exterior of City Hall, which we've shown several times and is well included in that GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price for the project. Some of the interior, which we haven't shown much of, is where we've been kind of finalizing those details. You see in the top picture there, the council chambers. That's the future council chambers for City Hall. This would be the view if you're sitting in the audience, looking towards the dais at all of you in the not-too-distant future. The picture there on the bottom is the café, which will be a unique feature for City Hall and a really unique way for us to engage with our residents, which was a key component of this particular project. The Monarch, which was named at your last meeting, our Multi-Generational Recreation Center, and you see here the exterior rendering of the facility. This is the rendering along Main Street, which we've shown a couple of times as well. Similar to City Hall, wanted to show some of the interior renderings as well. One of the, I think, features that people are most looking forward to is the pool area, which you see there on the top picture. That pool area will feature two slides, which will be the slide that goes outside, and your kind of standard's going to sit-and-slide, as well as a stand-up slide, which we know no other rec center in the country has one of these, will be a unique feature, and is also a way for us to kind of connect to our teens in this area. We have a beach entry that's planned for the pool, which gets to your babies, as well as kind of a spa area and aerobic space to get to our seniors, really trying to connect all of those generations in this space as well. There's also a rendering on the bottom, which would be a rendering of our new basketball, volleyball, pickleball area. Before, high school basketball courts, which is, I think, eight middle school courts, 12 pickleball courts, as well as volleyball in this space. The space also, as you all know, includes a variety of programming for aerobics, lots of classrooms, a wet classroom, event space that will occur on the third floor, lot of cardio equipment, an indoor turf area, which will be included, and also open out into the plaza space to the west of the project. Have a lot of unique features, including a child watch area as well, so that we can have parents workout while their children are in a safe space. Will also continue, which we have some, you know, senior lounge at our current rec center, we're expanding that here, and that will be a feature along kind of the pedestrian side, where they can watch along Main Street. You can see that there along the first floor. That'll be an opportunity for our teens and seniors to mix in a relaxed kind of lounge environment. So tonight, we have two, the purchase and sale agreements. Our council, Jeff Nydiger, will walk you through the next two slides, but this is kind of the progress of the project overall and the agreements we've been negotiating with Griffin Swinderton. As many of you remember, we've gone through the exclusive negotiating agreement, that was the first step to the pre-development agreements, gone to the ground lease as well, and now into the purchase and sale agreements for the individual components. Here's a little bit of the construction schedule, which, thanks to Corinne and our construction and design team, we have kept this schedule moving forward on time for delivery in November of '26. And that's where those arrows see, that is our goal, to continue to meet and open in November of 2026. So construction started in the fall of last year, and then we'll kick off the construction for City Hall and the Rec Center here in the next couple of weeks. So with that, I'll pass it over to Jeff to just kind of hit the highlights of the transaction document.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Good to see everybody again. This is just kind of a refresher. We've gone through these couple of slides before, but leading to this point, we've gotten through pretty much 80% of the legal documents for this transaction. We started with the ENA, the Exclusive Negotiating Agreement, which was the concept refinement stage. During this stage, Griffin Swinderton went at risk for those costs while we refined a concept, and Griffin Swinderton presented a final development proposal that was presented by Corinne a few months ago that enabled us to move to a preliminary development agreement. That's the stage where we refined the concept, advanced the designs, so that we could get to a guaranteed maximum price for each of these components, the civil work, the City Hall, and the Recreation Center. That preliminary development agreement still remains open. In fact, one of the agenda items is to extend the term of that preliminary development agreement to account for additional design work to get to a guaranteed maximum price on some parking. So that will be one item that the council will be asked to take action on. And then last November, we signed the first purchase and sale agreement for the civil work and the ground lease. The ground lease enables the developer to get on site and start doing work on the site for construction. And there's also a license agreement for the Main Street extension. That license agreement will terminate before the ground lease, so that the city can take that back and start preparing the Main Street extension for opening, as Griffin Swinderton continues the work on the vertical components. And then Griffin Swinderton has design and construction contracts with its contractors. The city's not a party to those. So tonight, we're looking to approve two new PSAs, purchase and sale agreements, one for the City Hall and one for the Recreation Center. Both of those have budgets attached to those that reflect the guaranteed maximum price that's been presented by Griffin Swinderton. That has been a collaborative, progressive process that the city has been involved in to refine that budget and get to those final numbers. These agreements also include contingencies for unforeseen circumstances as a standard in these transactions, including tariffs or other things that could come up. And those agreements enable the city to pay purchase price installments as construction progresses. So those purchase price installments are in schedules attached to the PSAs. Those schedules can be adjusted and modified as we go along. There are some true up and true down provisions in there that allow the parties to adjust those installment payments to match expenditures as needed.
So with that, upon your approval tonight, our next step will begin to go into construction for City Hall Recreation Center, and the plaza will begin. I have a ground lease amendment for you all to consider in March and April, as well as some of the retail condominium considerations. Those are some additional steps you'll take, and that's related to the retail on the first floor of the Recreation Center. We'll also bring forward to you a purchase and sale agreement for the structured parking that Jeff referred to, and our goal is to have this open in the fourth quarter of FY26. So tonight, we are asking for your approval of two purchase and sale agreements, one for the Monarch, which both are within the budget for the project, the Monarch at $81,721,788.89, and City Hall at $86,886,289.75. Again, both are within the budgeted amounts allocated by council for the project. Myself, Corinne, Jeff, and James are all here to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, questions?
I had a couple of questions. When you were talking about the Recreation Center, you mentioned a spa area?
Within the pool area, there's a kind of an area where you can go and sit, and there's jets that are planned, so you can sit and relax, and also be at opportunities to have walk against current, an exercise opportunity for seniors there as well.
Okay.
Or anyone who wants to walk against the current.
And then for the furniture and equipment that's going to be in both City Hall and Recreation Center, do we plan to use our current furniture that we have in the existing buildings and moving them, or is it going to be all new?
It will be a combination. Primarily will be new, so that it's matched, it's under warranty, so it continues to be fixed, but then in there are certain areas where our current furniture will be placed where appropriate.
Okay. And then I'm just curious, and no one may be able to answer this question, but on the guaranteed maximum price with lots of contingencies built in, what is the likelihood that we would come in under and actually, or under budget versus always going to the maximum?
I'm not sure anyone could answer that. I don't know, Corinne, if that's something you want to speak to?
Yeah. Well, I would think that in view of the state of our economy and country and tariffs and, you know, the type of equipment and so forth, the material to be used, I mean, there could be some variables.
Yeah. So part and parcel to any guaranteed max price is a fully open book, fully transparent process subject to the city's audit. So as we go from setting the guaranteed max price to awarding all the scopes of work to the subs, city has visibility into the actual awarded prices. All of the savings in that get returned to the city that, you know, would accrue through the duration of the project. So that's kind of the short answer, really, is that you have the guaranteed max price, but in a lot of cases, we have returned savings to the city.
But we could exceed the price as well.
If the prices exceed, it's on us. You know, we guarantee the price, so any cost overruns, schedule delays are something that's on us. You know what your cap is by going into these contracts.
Very brave of you. Thank you.
That was one of the benefits of working with a partner in a P3-type project, is that risk then goes to Griffin Swinderton.
I did see that there were line items where there were contingencies, like $3.2 million in one area, and then I think there's an additional million for possible tariffs or what might happen.
Yeah.
So, yeah, just wanted to understand how that worked, because there was some language about if the contingency, you know, of how much we would get back if there happened to be savings.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else? Did Ms. Holliday leave? All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I move to approve 5... Do these individually, I guess. Item 5A, I make a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second to approve. Okay. Motion carried. 5B, I make a motion to approve as well.
Second.
All right. Same vote. Motion carried. All righty. Moving to the items...
No, we have an action item on 5B.
I have an action item on 5D. Let's see, is it?
5E.
5E. Executive session.
Right, but we don't have to go into closed executive session, no, just an open session item.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city direct the city attorney to file suit against Dalton Southern III.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on that item. Motion carried. All right. The two items pulled, 4H and 4J, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Item 4H is approving a memorandum of understanding between the Flugerville Independent School District and the City of Flugerville Police Department for their participation in the notification of exposure to trauma program, also known as the Handle of Care Program, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
Yeah. Item 4H, the memorandum attached has an unfilled blank in Section 2B. Notification shall be given by sending an email to, and there's no person or email address identified there, so I would ask that we pull this item until that can be corrected at the next meeting.
Or we could just correct it now and give an email address?
Is that the notification to the city or notification to the school district?
Who's it go to?
Who's it go to? Yeah, Jason Smith, Assistant Chief.
Yes, we ask for that to be redacted. It's not an email address, it's a link. That's for law enforcement to report directly to the TDA.
Ah, so that is, that's in the original, it's just not in the copy that was provided.
That we produce to the public.
All right. In that case, the other question I have is about the exposure to trauma definition seems extremely broad and a little bit...some of it is quite specific, but some of it is a little bit vague, and I was wondering if you can give us some explanation about how broad that is and when the police are going to act on these.
Sure. So it's my understanding the school district wanted it to be more inclusive than exclusive for situations that would, I guess, instigate the contact. It could be trauma that they witness or that they are subject to, whether it be abuse, family abuse, they witness a crime. They wanted it pretty broad, because when you have school-aged children that are even witnesses to traumatic events, they don't quite know how to process that. So the intent is that if they start to have behaviors that are not consistent with their normal behaviors at school, that then they can approach them in a safe environment and offer resources to the household. The school has not provided details of what incident they were subject to, and so they're not given any specifics to a situation, other than this child was witness to it or subject of a traumatic experience, handle them with care. So if they start acting out, they have a way to then intervene and reach out to the parents and say, hey, we're seeing these behaviors, is there something we can do to help?
I had the opportunity to have a tour of the Justice Center on Friday and spoke with someone about this program before I knew it was going to be on the agenda, so I'm really happy to see the partnership between the city, you know, police department as well as the school district to help children in need.
Thank you. And my understanding is they're going to grow the program even outside of Flugerville PD, so we're excited to be on the front end of the program.
I love it. I just want to make sure I go on the record of saying this makes me feel extremely warm and fuzzy. It's really important that we handle our children in schools with care and that they don't see it as a behavior, which then leads to additional problems. And so I'm excited about it. I heard about this in our victim services meeting, so I'm just really elated. I would like to go ahead and make a motion for us to approve 4H.
I have a motion and a second to approve 4H.
Advocacy liaisons.
Motion carried.
And the final item pulled is 4J, approving an extension to the preliminary development agreement with Griffin Swinderton, LLC, for the development of Downtown East and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
I don't have any questions about this. I just want a record vote.
Okay. Move approval.
Second. Motion carried. Having no other items, we urge her...
Look at their 29ers!